I'll order the City of Fort Walton Beach Regular Meeting of the Code Compliance Special Magistrate Hearings today. My name is Steve Baumann. I'm the Special Magistrate today. We first order of business is to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
And do we have some announcements regarding cases that are now in compliance?
We do 7.2, 7.3, and 7.4 are now in compliance.
And does that leave 7.1 and 7.5 still to be heard today? Okay. I have reviewed the agenda, and I approve the agenda for today. I've also reviewed the minutes, and without any objection, unless there is some, I approve the minutes. That brings us to anyone who is going to testify, if you want to swear.
I'll swear in a minute.
Byron, do you have anyone testifying?
Yeah, just me.
Okay. All right. Have you all sort of told the truth, whole truth, all the truth, help we got?
Yeah.
You're under it.
Okay. We'll call 7.1, case number CE24575WS.
Mr. Burns, do you want me to just read the case report in the records so we have everything like I normally do, even though I don't have a specific request at the end? I'm Robert Rhodes, Code Inspector, City of Fort Walton Beach. This is case CE-24-575-WS. This case pertains to the subject property of 207 Combs Manor Court, Northwest Fort Walton Beach, Florida. According to the tax records, the owners of said property are Deborah A. Riley, Brodenex, and Hall. This property was originally found in violation 230 days ago on August 1st, 2024. This case was brought before the magistrate on October 16th, 2024. The magistrate found the property in violation of Water Service Required, Section 10.51.04, for prohibited occupancy without legal connection to city water service. The magistrate issued an order giving the respondents until November 30th, 2024, to bring the property into compliance. An inspection of the property on November 30th, 2024, found the violations had not been corrected as ordered. Therefore, on November 30th, 2024, a statement of noncompliance was filed. This case was brought back before the magistrate on January 15th, 2025. On January 15th, 2025, magistrate continued the case for an additional 60 days. The case was brought back before the magistrate on March 19th, 2025. The magistrate issued a second order, including $325 administrative fee and a fine of $100 per day, starting on November 30th, 2025. I'm sorry, November 30th, 2024. Due to the ongoing family litigation on the plaintiff's side, an attorney for the plaintiff has requested a rehearing with regards to the magistrate's order dated March 19th, 2025.
Your Honor, there's no real process in the city's code of ordinances for a rehearing or reconsideration. The attorney for the respondent, not actually the respondent who had been appearing at all the hearings, but the other owners of the properties, because there's multiple owners of this property, he reached out to my office to ask what could they do to get back before the magistrate, because they had been unaware of the proceedings, and because they are not the ones actually living on the property. I forwarded the request by counsel for the respondent to the other Mr. Baumann, Special Magistrate, and he did approve of the request to rehear the matter. And prior to that, though, we had confirmed that the lien had not been filed in the public records, because if that would have happened, then it would have taken it out of the jurisdiction of the magistrate at that point in time. So you do still have jurisdiction to hear a reconsideration of the final hearing. And so that was one issue that we had.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Burns. Anything else, Mr. Rhodes?
Just that we do have Exhibit L as the notice of hearing, proof of service for today's hearing, April 16th, 2025. And that's really all I have for you.
Mr. Cotton, have you seen the notice of hearing?
No, but I was advised that the hearing date's today. I'm here on behalf of five of the six.
Okay. You don't have any objection to the notice of hearing service?
I do not, Your Honor.
Thank you.
And for clarification, Bert, the sixth owner, because you said there's five of six, that's who you served notice on?
Yes, I posted the property and sent certified to the property at 207 Combs Manor. Let me see. I know I have the posting, whether we actually had certified service as well, I'd have to look.
I don't think there's any objection to service, so I don't think it's important at this point.
No objections to the service. I also spoke to Frankie, who's the occupant, this morning. I expected her to be here, but she's not here.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes.
Is there further?
No.
Mr. Cotton?
Good morning, Your Honor. Good mornings. Thank you. First, I'd like to thank you all for allowing us this rehearing. My name is Byron Cotton. I represent the following individuals with regard to respect to this property, and that's Cassandra Falzer, Deborah Riley, Brodenex, Glenda Riley, Tammy Riley, and Kenneth Riley. That is five of the six owners that own the property, that's the subject property in question. Your Honor, the individual I do not represent is Frankie Riley, who is the sole occupant of the premises. Essentially, it came to my attention through a client of mine, one of the clients, that there were some code enforcement issues, but it was after, I believe, the hearing had already taken place, so I wasn't able to come and assist at that time. I'm in this and before you today essentially by default, because I represent these individuals with regard to a partition complaint against Ms. Riley that we filed on April 14th.
Against Frankie Riley?
I'm sorry.
Frankie Riley is the defendant in the partition?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I represent the five individuals against Frankie Riley regarding a partition action that was just filed on the 14th.
I understand.
So essentially what we're asking, because my clients at that time, at the time of the hearing, while I don't doubt that notice was given, my clients don't live in the property, were never, never received notice of what was going on with the property, this issue of disconnection, which I understand is the violation. It's my understanding that when you have an ability to connect, you have to pay for the connection and have connection in the city in order to, otherwise it's a code violation. In other words, you can't have your own source or figure out some other way to service the property. My clients do not have access to the property at this time due to conflicts between the parties. And therefore, essentially what I'm asking for today, we have already moved forward with our legal action to try to resolve the issues with the property to where my clients can have access. If it's not remedied by Ms. Frankie Riley, they would be able to remedy it. But at this time, we really don't have access to the property due to the issues between the parties, which is the reason for the filing of the partition complaint. What I'm asking the city to do at this time is essentially to abate the proceeding in or at least remove the lien temporarily. I am happy to come in and give updates with regard to the action. You know, we do not have the ability at this time to remove Frankie Riley from the property because she is a property owner, but we don't have the ability to remedy the problem. Now, it's come to my attention that Ms. Riley may have recently, when I say Ms. Riley, Ms. Frankie Riley, may have recently made some attempts to resolve this leak. My understanding is she disconnected, and I got this from Mr. Rhodes. He was kind enough to kind of give me an update as to what the situation was at the property, that essentially there was a, some leaks at the property that were making the water bill very high. That because of that, I assume she disconnected, and I do not know how she's been working without water there. However, that there has been a recent attempt to fix that problem, but she may have done so without a permit. So now a permit needs to be pulled. And again, I have all of this third hand, just from Mr. Rhodes. I do not have any actual knowledge of this. So that obviously needs to be remedied, and it's my understanding a notice will be sent for that. We are back in a position of my clients don't have access, my clients don't know what's going on with this. This is the first I've heard of it, although I am happy to hear it's being resolved. She probably needs to go to the correct channels and do the correct things to do that. What I'm asking for at this time is simply, my clients came in late to this game. They don't have the ability right now to fix this problem. They are not residing on the property. My concern is, I understand the city's only method of enforcement is to lien the property, which is affecting nonowners. So what I'm asking the city to do is to temporarily stay the lien, not move forward with the lien, not let it accrue, so that we can get through the partition proceeding. Figure there will be an owner at that point, we will have the ability, or someone will have the ability for Ms. Riley to be removed, or she will be the sole owner, it will be her debt solely to deal with, to prevent my clients from being penalized to something they have zero control of, at least temporarily.
Mr. Rhodes?
I would also mention that Ms. Frankie Riley did arrive during the process here. She is here now.
Good morning, Ms. Riley.
More information on it. Yes, and we're fine with whatever amended action you all want to make. We would prefer not to have to come back for another order later, if you want to just amend the order to give it a further date, or whatever you all suggest is reasonable.
And I know Ms. Riley's here, and she can testify. What's your understanding of the connection at this point?
My understanding there is that they did make a repair. They did it without a permit, ran a new water line to the house. The water department believes the leak is fixed, because they had it on temporarily for the repair, but they have not turned the service back on because she, I believe, owes about $2,300 at this point. That's after the reduced amount. There was a major reduction done.
On the water bill itself?
On the water bill.
What's the, do you have a calculation of the accrued fines at this point?
I do not. It would be, well, I think it was $100 a day from, what did I say, the report there?
I think, well, my notes don't say.
November 30th, so.
Right.
What's that about?
Maybe a hundred-ish days, 105 or so days, ballpark.
Yeah.
I'm guessing, based on today's date.
Right. Does the city have a position on the, are you asking for those fines that have already accrued to be abated?
I am actually asking for all of the fines to be waived. My clients were unaware and don't have the ability to fix it, so I'm asking the city to waive those, set us out a new date to accomplish either allow Ms. Riley to resolve, finally resolve her problem, or get our partition action heard to where she would be the sole owner and/or there would be new owners, and that would be resolved, because there would be no occupant.
I can get some clarification on that. So the fines actually only started accruing at the last hearing. They were retroactively imposed by the other Mr. Baumann. He had abated them apparently at that point in time, giving Ms. Frankie Riley more time to fix the property. So they really only got imposed at the last hearing, retroactive, on November 30th.
That was, I think, March 19th?
March 19th.
So it's basically one month of?
One month, yeah.
Okay. Does the city have objection to, I don't know if abatement's the right word, but to waiving?
No, we have no objection. We just want resolution. Our goal is to get water service back in the property and sanitation being paid for, the whole thing.
Okay.
And it sounds to me like what Mr. Rhodes advised to me, that Ms. Riley's been making some effort to get that done recently.
Anything further?
Judge, just, I would say, not only are we asking to waive, we need time to resolve that. I want to make sure that, you know, it doesn't just start today again.
What, from your standpoint, do you think is a reason?
Well, I would say two things. One, it sounds like.
Hang on just a second.
Yes, sir.
If it's just a matter of pulling a permit, that doesn't take a whole lot of time, right?
Well, that's a separate case. The permit is not before you today. It's the water service being turned on. All they need to do is pay the fee and turn the water on at this point.
Okay. So that's a, that's a matter of, the city's already waived the fees, and I don't think I have jurisdiction to do that for you.
Yeah, they've reduced the.
Or not waived them, but reduced them.
They've reduced the water fees and penalties.
Okay, okay. So we can't touch that, but as far as the accrual of the fines on the code enforcement, I think that, it sounds like that's something that's doable, and I'm inclined to do that. I would do want to hear if Ms. Riley wants to speak to this issue, but I want to make sure you're done.
Excellent.
Okay. Well, let me circle back to that question. How much time reasonably do you think you need to get this matter?
Well, Your Honor, I think there's two ways this can be resolved. One, Ms. Riley can just get connected, and since she's living in the house, that would be her cost, and maybe she's working on that, I don't know, whether that be through a cash catch-up, whether it's a payment plan, however that happens with the city. Or two, the partition, going through the partition. Now, the time to do that?
How long has it been? When was it?
It's been filed. I do not know if Ms. Riley's been served. However, you know, that is more of a, it is filed under the Partition for Heirs Act, meaning an appraisal. We've already done an appraisal, it's been attached, but the court may order another one. You know, I will tell you, my clients have made an offer, and their position is going to be, we're willing to purchase our interest out, whether Ms. Riley wants to do that or not, I don't know. A lot of that depends upon how contiguous the partition gets. So I would tell you, in my experience, a minimum, just based on time for response and time it takes to get a hearing for me to resolve it, would probably be five to six months, you know?
Yeah, so.
Is, I guess, my answer to that. Now, I don't want, if you're asking what I think the minimum time it would take me to get it through the system, that's what I believe the time is.
And that's ambitious, I think.
Maybe.
So what I'd be inclined to do is to come back in two months? Does that make sense?
I think you give folks three months, or a status.
Yeah, a status report, or hopefully a clean report that is done in three months, whatever that date, the hearing will follow.
Assuming Ms. Riley doesn't up and explain she's going to have it resolved sooner.
Absolutely.
Right. So, I mean, before I make that order, I do want, Ms. Riley, do you want to testify?
I'm sure.
Would you step to the microphone?
Do you sort of tell the truth, whole truth, all the truth, help we got?
Yes.
And just talk.
And when you get to the microphone, would you state your, your name?
I'm Frankie Riley.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I missed the last one, and I have been here coming to them, and this is not recently, I just started getting this fixed. I've been, as you know, Bert, I've had, this is probably the third plumber that I've had to come in. Admittedly, the second one was probably just me trying to save money. He didn't know what he was doing, and at the last hearing, I let them know that I have receipts. I've sent Cassandra receipts from the water department, so she has this as well, where she can literally say there have been multiple plumbers that have come in, but what happened was, I ended up having to get Hydro Scout, which has more extensive, you know, to find the leak. Turns out, it was like in our, like, utility room and underground, so they had to end up doing this whole, way more than what I was prepared to have done. I mean, I literally just had to pay him like $5,000. And I know, Bert, you came over and you saw where, and let me just circle back, the last hearing, I did miss it, I had been at the others, I had no, it was not done on purpose, I had been sick, I had COVID. He had to stop work. I told him to give it about seven days, let me get better. And I mentioned that when you came, and you took a picture, you saw where he had actually started. Remember, you came by and helped, just made a picture. So it was started, so I would not have just not come. But I did realize it after the fact, and I'm like, dear God. So he had held it off for a while, but like I said, this is not just recently, this has been ongoing, and also, they have a key to the house, so there's no reason why they would not be able to just walk in. And I know they have walked, walked in before, so it's like, you know, I'm not the one calling the police or attacking people in the manner that they've done to me.
Ms. Riley, let me maybe get to the meat of everything, and I understand you want to say what you want to say, but I've already said that we are inclined to basically waive the fees, the fines that have accrued.
Yes, sir.
We're not inclined to waive the administrative fees, are we?
Correct.
So those administrative fees of $325, if I'm correct, will remain. But the fines themselves will be waived for three months, okay? And the accrued fines will be abated or waived, whatever, however you want to couch that.
It would be abated, but then in other cases, they'd be waived.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So, and then you and Mr. Cotton can come back, or just Mr. Cotton. We just need a status report on where, where everything stands.
Okay. And, well, I know you came by and dropped off a notice saying that we had to stop work because lack of permit.
Right.
Which, I'm not gonna lie, I wish you would have told me that day when you came in and took the picture. I didn't know, like, you didn't say anything. You came back and just posted a notice saying, you're going to be fined, you need a permit, and it must stop. But I think, for the most part, he's finished. For the most part, the plumber has finished, but I did go, I came here, I didn't realize you have to do online, so I came here to pull permit the day after Bert came and dropped that notice off. And, so I went online, and I had talked with them, they said seven to 14 days. That's about a week ago, I think, that, because it was the next day, whenever he dropped the notice off, it was the next day that I pulled for the permit. And I talked to them yesterday, they're like, okay, what could take up to 14 days? So, I mean, pretty much, he's finished, for the most part, with the plumbing part of it, I'm confident of, but he just is not going to be able to complete it until the permit comes in. But I have been working on this. This is not just recent. I mean, it's an older home, and it just, you know, it's not like I just have been sitting around twiddling my, you know, thumbs, or that I'm not communicating with my sisters. They literally won't answer the phone when I call them. She was here, she said that she sent me an email saying that, you know, a property appraiser was going to come by. And listen, I want to sell the house. I want to sell this house.
Good.
So my partition or any of that is needed, is beyond me.
Well, sure.
As far as my knowledge, it was two others that didn't want to, but I had been wholeheartedly wanting to sell.
I understand, and I'm not saying you've acted in bad faith or anything. I think you can, you know, try to work with Mr. Cotton to get all this stuff straightened out, and that, and the city will work with you on the permit, I'm sure. Just keep that, you know, front burner, so that you get in compliance, and then it's between your sisters and you, Mr. Cotton represents them, and I hope everything comes out fine, you know? Good. I don't want to use the word fine, because I don't know.
Since I'll be helping you draft the order, Your Honor, do you want me to couch this order to reconsider the previous ruling at the previous hearing, and then abating fines for 90 days and setting the hearing 90 days out? Does that sound like?
That's, that sounds like a good order.
All right.
Okay. So, anything else you would like to say?
No, I guess that's, that's it.
Okay, okay. Well, good luck to you, ma'am.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Cotton, anything else?
I haven't got anything further, but I appreciate, first, again, I appreciate the reconsideration. I know, you know, we got late on the notice, so thank you for reconsidering the abatement and the waiver. As soon as I get the order, hopefully it'll all be resolved by then. I'm going to take an opportunity, hopefully, to speak with Ms. Riley, see if we can get some resolution. And, you know, if you don't mind, for, at least on behalf of my clients, can that order, am I, much like court, am I just making an appearance? Can I get a copy of that order? Does it come to me? Is it going to go?
Oh, yeah, yeah. You'll send you a courage copy once it's entered.
Perfect, sure, perfect. That's all I have. I appreciate your time.
All right. And if you have any objections or modifications of the order, deal with Mr. Rhodes.
Perfect.
Yeah, you want me to run the draft by Mr. Cotton?
Yes, please.
I will.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Thank you.
And real quick, before we leave, you know, sometimes on these cases, Your Honor, we'll kind of ask staff to say, what do you need to actually do to bring the property into compliance? Because sometimes it's just cheaper to pay $2,300 maybe than keep paying attorneys. No offense to you, Mr. Cotton. So, Bert, I guess laying it out is just easy, because there are people watching on the other five owners of the property, might be watching on YouTube. What needs to be done to bring this case into compliance?
My understanding is to pay the $2,300 plus a new deposit. But I think with Ms. Frankie's history, her deposit would be a larger deposit. If she's no longer in the property, I believe they can start a new account. I'm not 100% sure what would happen with the $2,300. If she's out and somebody else goes in, I think they don't worry about the $2,300, but I don't want to be quoted on that.
And so that, plus the permit, which sounds like it's already being processed?
Correct, yes.
And nothing else? Is that it?
That's it.
And Mr. Rhodes, I assume the administrative fee has not been paid yet?
Correct.
And, of course, it was due first day of the law?
I believe there's two administrative fees currently due.
Okay.
$325 each.
I'll put those in the order.
Okay, thank you.
So that'd be three sets of fees now? Is that three?
If there's another one for today's hearing, then yes, there'd be three.
So $325 times three?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Good to see you today.
Yes, sir, you as well.
So the final order we, as announced by Mr. Rhodes, he's going to draft the order. He'll run it by me and Mr. Cotton, and we'll, hopefully, everything will work out.
Okay.
Sounds like it's.
And it's a typical order, that's why I'll just put the draft together for you, Your Honor.
Yeah, yeah, if you'll just send me what you've done.
Yeah.
I'll tweak it if need be, and I'll get it to the city, to Mr. Rhodes. Okay. And I think that just leaves the one case, which is 7.5, case number CE24373MAN.
Yes, sir.
Robert Rhodes, Code Inspector, City of Fort Walton Beach. This is case CE-24-373-MAN. This case pertains to subject address at 311 Kiwi Place, Northeast Fort Walton Beach, Florida. According to the tax records, the owners, owner of said property is Algie King. This property was originally found in violation 337 days ago on May 14th, 2024. This case was brought before the magistrate on September 18th, 2024. The magistrate found the property in violation of Maintenance General 5.0, Section 5.07.01, for failure to repair or maintain structures on the property, including the roof and front porch fascia and soffit boards, also windows, Section 5.07.01, subsection C, for failure to repair broken and aborted up windows. The magistrate issued an order giving the respondent until March 18th, 2025, to bring the property into compliance. An inspection of property on March 18th, 2025, found the violations had not been corrected as ordered. Therefore, on March 18th, 2025, a statement of noncompliance was filed. On March 27th, 2025, service was obtained for the notice of hearing. At this time, staff would like to enter the exhibits into the record. Exhibit H is the September 18th, 2024, order of the magistrate. Exhibit I is the March 18th, 2025, statement of noncompliance. And Exhibit J is the notice of hearing and proof of service. I would add that some progress has been made at the property. The fascia and window have been addressed. However, the roof issue is not. He has a permit pulled for re-roofing, but currently hasn't got the funding to pay the roofer, and staff is requesting acceptance of the fine, in fact, conclusions of law and issuance of order two, including the $325 administrative fee. Staff also recommends a fine amount of $100 per day, starting on March 18th, 2025, the date previously set by the magistrate. And that's all we have for you. Let me see if Mr. King has any objections to the exhibits. Mr. King, you have any exhibits? See if you have any objections to the notice of hearing or anything that we have in there before they ask the order, you know? of hearing or anything that we have in there, before they ask the order you got. Statement of noncompliance, just, I'm just saying that, and then we go to security.
Do you want to put Mr. King on our order?
Just no objections to the documents themselves?
No, whatever you get it.
We got no objections to the documents, I'll put those in there.
And Mr. King, do you mind raising your right hand? Do you square up the truth, hold the truth, I'm sure you've got it?
Definitely got it.
Okay, you're on the right side. Let's take a few here.
Would you like to see the photos of the roof before we, they're the original photos from the prior hearing?
I can, I think they're in the file, aren't they, same ones?
Yes, sir. Like you said, the fascia and windows resolved, but it's just the back structure on the left corner.
Okay, go ahead. Put it up on the screen.
Ah! Like you said, he does have a roofer contracted, but apparently his funding fell through. So it's pretty much this one here. Let's see if I can make it a little bigger. See this structure back here? The yellow structure with the roof is all rotted.
Yes.
Needs an entire new roof back there. That's the one that's holding it up at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. I have reviewed the files and the exhibits, and without objection, they're admitted. Mr. King?
Yes.
Do you wish to testify?
Well, I just need more time, and what he, what it comes to with Vincent Jones pulling the permit, but with the price that he gave me.
Yes, sir.
And I still need a little bit more time to get a few more dollars together.
Mr. King, I apologize for interrupting you, sir. Can you step forward to the mic and talk to me?
And you can raise yourself a little bit if you want, like, you can angle it a little bit more towards that way, or maybe not, maybe that's true. I'm sorry.
No, it went down in there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. King. So you were saying that what you need is more time?
Need more time to get a few more dollars together to do on that, on that left roof that, the one that, I fixed the poets, the windows and everything on 113.
Right. So how much time do you think you need?
Gotta come up with about three more hours an hour to get it done.
Would you need 30 days, 60 days? What do you think you need?
Can I get six months?
Mr. Rhodes, do you have a position on six months?
No, sir. I mean, we'd like to see it sooner, but if that's what it's going to take him, and it's going to get done...
I don't want to set you up for failure. I want to give you enough time, but it needs to be, hopefully it can be done within that six-month period, but we're going to be liberal with you on this one and say, six months from today.
Yeah, thank you for, appreciate it.
That it needs to be done. The fine of $100 a day will be imposed, okay? So the sooner you get it done...
If it's not done in six months, it's $500 a day?
It's $100 a day.
$100 a day? Is that what you're, okay.
I mean, not a day, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, but is it starting today, retroactive, yes, and I guess...
Are you asking for it to be retroactive to the 18th?
We normally just ask for it to start whatever day you give them, not retroactive. Well, in this case, I was asking for retroactive from the date that it was previously set in the other order, but if you're going to extend the date, it would start from then.
At the end of that date?
At the end of that date.
Can we, I want to give them some incentive to get it done.
You can, you can do that if you want to.
We can start it sooner than the six months, right?
You could, yeah.
Yeah, that's, I want to make sure that there's incentive for you to get this done as soon as possible, okay? So I would, it's going to be $100 a day, but it will start four months from now, okay? If you get it done before then, those fines will not be imposed, right? Okay? But if you don't, if you wait till, if it takes more than four months, those fines will start to accrue. You understand that, Mr. King?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Anything further?
No, I just thank you for...
Included the administrative fee in it?
Yes, the administrative fee of $325 will be imposed. Mr. King, that's due the first day of the month following this hearing, so, April.
First of May.
Yeah, first of May, yes, sir. Okay. Anything further? Mr. Rhodes?
Yes, sir.
Mr. King?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. King. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more business to come?
I just would like to introduce, we have Commander Shoy Williams from the Police Department here. He's going to be their code enforcement representative for the Police Department.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Come up for me.
All right. Well, there be no further business. We're adjourned.
I'll get that order by, and probably later today, and then we'll probably get to you